Selectmen's meeting to order. Today is April 18th, 2018. Just so you know, the meeting is being video and audio recorded and will be shown on local access television. Firstly, early this morning, we suffered a great loss to our town. Jim Benson passed away unexpectedly. Jim has been moderator for a number of years and served as our local historian as the Historic Commission Chairman. Jim was a pillar to this community and will be sorely missed. I ask that everyone stand and join me in a moment of silence.
Thank you. If you join me in the pledge of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Firstly, I'd like to welcome our newest member, Denise Raze, after a long campaign. Welcome Denise, and I'm sure you'll be a great asset to the board. I look forward to working with you.
Welcome Denise.
Thank you.
Look forward to be working with you.
The first item on the agenda is reorganization of the board. I'll entertain a motion for chairman if anyone has one.
I'll make a motion. Anthony Kenahan will be the chairman.
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Passed unanimously. I'll make a motion to nominate Eldon as vice chair.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And do we have a chairman for clerk? I mean, a motion for clerk.
Yeah, they can make a motion. Denise Raze will be the new clerk.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That was easy. Next on the agenda is the Board of Selectmen rules. In your packet, there'll be two or three page memo on rules that were established a number of years ago. I'll entertain a motion to accept those unless anyone has any questions.
I'll make a motion of that effect.
Second. All those in favor?
Did you have a chance to look at them, Denise?
I'm sure you'll correct me if I'm out of order, so I'll agree to them for now.
Okay, I just wanted to know.
All in favor?
All in favor? What am I saying? Okay.
Okay, and now we have three assignments. Eldon, you like the road opening permit, correct?
Usually that's going with a clerk. I've done it for so damn many times, even when I wasn't clerk there. I would like to for that. Denise would take that, I would make a motion if Denise would be the new, well, she is a clerk. What are you going on your packing clerk? Or what are you?
I don't know.
The next thing you had.
Doesn't matter to me, whatever.
And your gender is a surges, a signature?
Do you have a preference?
Well, usually the chair takes that part, you know. I mean, I don't know if you want to do that. You know what that is Denise? Where we go out to bid to other communities there to get the lowest bid on the salt and the.
I do understand what it is.
Yeah, right.
But after looking at the agenda.
Yeah.
I'm thinking parking clerk is probably more appropriate for me at this point in the beginning stages.
Right, right. I'll make a motion of that effect. It's packing clerk.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And so we have surges and road opening permits. How often are the road opening permits in David?
They can vary, but there's certainly this.
They can vary when they come in here, you know what I mean? You never get them all at the same time and sometimes the people don't have the signatures and you have to keep on coming in and out there.
Do you mind doing it Eldon, just because you're around?
No, if you want me to do it, I'll continue to do it because it's a pain.
Yeah.
I know Denise works out of town and so do you.
Yeah, so if you could.
I'm closer here, I've done it. And the only thing is, we just can't keep those contractors waiting and leaving the things in there because we don't always get the signature. There's two here tonight here now, and they don't all come in the same. And she is new at it and she's doing a job there now to catch up with it. No, I'll take it if I was nominated.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to that effect.
Second. Or did I need to make the motion?
That's fine. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, myself.
Okay. I'll do the surges contracts then if there's a motion.
Motion for Anthony to do the surges.
I'll be all second motion.
All in favor? Aye.
Will you do it?
Yes. Okay. And up next is the pinning of the newest elected selectman. And Jerry?
Thank you. Denise, after 12 years of serving the town, it gives me a great pleasure to be here today. As you were here at the last meeting, we pinned a number of elected officials. And as our newest selectman, it gives me a great honor to present you as the first newly elected selectman to receive the selectman's pen.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Accept review, the meeting minutes of March 7th and March 21st.
I'll make a motion of that effect.
And as you were, because Ms. Raze was not here on the board, she's not able to actually make them. That's correct.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Antique and secondhand license renewals, Tracy?
Yes, so you have five secondhand antique establishments before you for renewal. They are the Lamplight Shop, it's a yard sale, One Horse Shay, Attic Treasures, and the Eclectic Collection. All of them have submitted their renewal paperwork. None of them have taxes outstanding, and the building inspector has done inspections on all of them. So I recommend that the board approve their renewals.
Good, thank you Tracy. Do we have a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Safe Roots to School update, Tracy?
Sure. So as background, in 2016, the town signed a community compact agreement with the state. Basically, through that compact, the state committed to helping local municipalities with getting aid and those types of things, removing barriers. And West Bridgewater committed to a couple of things, infrastructure improvements as well as establishing a Safe Roots to School program. So Julie Amaral at the school has kind of taken the lead, and we have submitted an update to the Division of Local Services, letting them know all of the steps that West Bridgewater has taken to establish a Safe Roots to School program. It was accepted by the Division of Local Services, who has confirmed that we have met our obligation under this best practice, and that will in turn make us eligible to receive bonus points when we apply for various grants and things like that through the state. So it's great that we were designated complete with this best practice.
Is this completely separate from the thing that Chris Hainatelli's working on?
They kind of work together, they're complementary. So there are certain projects that will be worked on through the Complete Streets program that will, I guess, for example, you have to come up with a policy within a year, and the policy has to have a certain minimum number of points. This will give us some additional points towards that total point that we need to get.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions?
Hang on.
Denise, you do?
No.
Okay, thank you Tracy. Site plan review. First, we have 405 West Street Enterprise Rent-A-Car. David, do you know exactly what their intentions are? I haven't had a chance to read this.
Yep, no worries. So what I do is I provide, although this is black and white, it's a little difficult to see. That large building in the middle, that's a big, large rectangular building, is the existing Enterprise Rent-A-Car facility. And all of those parking spaces behind them is theirs as well. You'll see if you'll, as you look at it here, kind of like at, say, 2 o'clock or 1 o'clock, there is a wooded area there. They are proposing that they will put 816 more parking spots there. In addition to that, they will also put a 40 by 40 canopy, so that way cars can go undercover if they need, if need be. It is an allowable use. They are going to be before the planning board because it is in the Water Resource District, and therefore they're going to require a special permit through the planning board in order to conduct their work.
Thank you David.
I think it's great, they seem to be expanding up there and they keep a good clean place up there.
We make a lot of money off their excise tax too.
On the excise tax for the trucks, things like that.
Okay. Any questions or is there a motion to pass to the planning board?
I'll make a motion of that effect.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
863 Maple Street, MD Holistics.
Yep, so MD Holistics is the medical marijuana facility that came before the board about 18 months ago or so. They have finally gone through their permitting phase with the Department of Public Health. They are now going to be before the zoning board of appeals in reference to obtaining a variance. This is not a site plan review because they are not adding onto the facility or doing anything on the outside. Unfortunately, the one that, again, it was color, it's black and white, so you can't see it very well. But that white dot, if you will, is the existing Plassey Building. They are going to be housed inside of Mr. Plassey's building. They're not going to make any structural changes to the outside. But last night, when I met with select woman Raze, she had asked, why are we doing a variance? And the reason being is because the facility is located within 500 feet of a residential neighborhood. The residential neighborhood is to the right, again, I apologize for the drawing, but in that middle, in the middle area there, to the right of the Plassey Building is Route 24. So on, to the right of Route 24 is the back edge of Scotland Street where the neighborhood, residential neighborhood is. And our zoning requires 500 feet from the edge of the property to the edge of the residential area. So I put this up there, you can't see it, I drew a line. It's about 450 feet from one edge to the other. But I also spoke to their attorney earlier on this as well, and he reminded me that it's in excess of 500 feet to the actual building, because obviously the building is not right on the edge. So in any event, our bylaw is still clear, it's from border to border, so it's going to require a variance before the zoning board of appeals. They are going to argue, and I think that they have a legitimate argument, but they are going to argue that the state requirement for, for having the setbacks is to make sure that you do not have any infringement on the population that you're trying to protect. And obviously, having a major interstate go in between you in that residential area would make it pretty difficult to infringe on that neighborhood. In any event, it'll be a decision for the zoning board of appeals to make. Right now, it's just before you, in case you have any additional comments to make to the ZBA.
Thank you David. Does anyone have anything, or are you ready to pass it on to the ZBA?
Just a quick question. You said there are no houses to the left or the right within 500 feet?
Yeah, correct. To the left, as we're looking at it from here, there is nothing residential within 500 feet, it's only to the right-hand side. And again, you would ask the questions about 450 feet on border to border.
So the residence is on the other side of the highway?
Exactly.
Okay.
There are some residents, if you go down Pleasant and then you take a right-hand turn as opposed to a left, but they're outside the 500-foot district.
Okay, I know this don't have anything to do with this, but it's still to do with marijuana. I think at a meeting at the Old Conley Planning Council, David, I think I informed you, the speaker, the commissioner's going to be there, and you said that you would like to attend.
Yep.
I'm going to make damn sure that, you know, before I have you come up there, that speaker will be there.
Yeah, no, it's, it's going to be important. We have it later on the agenda too, in reference to the retail.
We can talk about that.
But you're absolutely right.
Okay. Is there a motion to pass to the ZBA?
Motion to pass.
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Arbor Day, we have a annual proclamation in the packet. I'll entertain a motion to accept that proclamation.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Vote on raises for non-annual, non-contractual employees. David, is that sheet in here?
It is. Let me provide to you what page. Page 110. Can you put it on 110, please? Oh, you have it on 110? Okay, I'm sorry. So you will see, we basically have, we do this on an annual basis, right before we pass along the budget to the finance committee, is that you have three secretaries that are non-union, non-contractual. We normally provide them the same raises that we provided to the clerical union, which in this case is 2.5%. You can see what their hourly rates are. It's not a high amount, and quite frankly, all of them make a couple of thousand dollars a year. It's obviously part-time basis and variable at best. And then after that, there is the inspectors. I've also placed it in the budget that I'm recommending to you as well. You will recall that our building inspector had done a survey. He felt strongly that our part-time inspectors were underpaid in their stipend position. He was looking to also increase some other stipends, which we discussed the budget, I was not recommending, but in reference to their stipend amount for salary, I was recommending that we kind of meet almost halfway in between, and those numbers are before you.
Thank you David. Okay, I have no issue with these changes.
No, I know that the building inspector, he requested that for the inspectors there, and I don't have an issue with this.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Could I make a comment?
Yes, of course.
Sorry about that. Are you just approving the secretaries or are you?
We are also, would be approving the inspectors.
Okay, so just, just for clarification, last night, I, I didn't know how these numbers were arrived at, so I asked David if he could show the backup to me as to what they used for four comparable towns in coming up with the amounts for the gas, plumbing, and electrical inspector. And I didn't think the towns were comparable. They were much larger in size and scope, so that's why I agree with the recommendation versus what was proposed.
All right, thank you. Okay, Eldon made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. FY '19 budget. David, do you have a?
Yep, so as you know, you have sat in, since February, every one of your meeting, meetings, you have listened to department heads and chair people of their respective committees present their budgets. And so, as is every single year, unfortunately, we don't have enough money to be able to fund all of their budgets. So I have gone through the, all the budgets, and as I have every year, has made a recommendation to you. Here's my executive summary, is that the budget is balanced using a raise of 2% versus 2.5%. The operational budget increase is 5.5% year over year. That's not really a true number, which I'll explain to shortly. That 5.5% increase year over year represents a $1.7 million increase year over year, and I provide you every year the five largest drivers in the budget. And you can see before you is half a million dollars to the local school. And again, this is after I've made some modifications to what their requests are. $4,000 in benefits, two lines in reference to principal, interest, and debt, and $174,000 in police chiefly, because we're trying to fund that dispatch center. Notable is that the debt line is increasing this year because we have finally bonded the full amount for the school. If you'll recall, we had an appropriation of $32 million. We had carried $27 million the previous handful of years, but there was not a final settlement or a final agreement on the number with CTA, our construction company. And once we finally settled on the final number, we bonded the last $5 million and paid them. So that increase that you see for principal debt and the interest is 100% attributable to the increase of that $5 million that we had to bond this year. So in my opinion, that is really not fair to classify that as part of operational budget. The town overwhelmingly approved the school, it's a debt exclusion, there's nothing we can do about it, we have no control. So, you know, those are just two increases based on a decision the town has already made. The, the budget does reflect all contractual raises for both unions and non-union employees that the Board of Selectmen have already approved. We do not, as I do every year, we do not use free cash in order to balance the budget. That would, that would not be fiscally prudent. We have used that money to be able to take care of, incorporate our capital budget articles. This budget presented to you at this point does not provide funding for school resource officer, because the agreement between the school committee and the Board of Selectmen at your March 21st meeting was that we were going to have that as a separate warrant article, and we were going to allow the townspeople to be able to decide on that as a separate item at town meeting. I will, as a note, because this is balanced at 2%, is that if we were to make no other changes to the budget and the school resource officer passes, then the town will raise it 2.5%, which will be the first time in five years that it's done that. And the last item of note is that we did fully fund the finance committee reserve at $67,000, as we've done in past years. I would think, if you don't have any questions about this document?
I have one question, David. I don't know if we're going to, I know that we got to go as far as East Street traffic light, and generally, we pay cash for everything here, but we might have to charge that as a, as a one-up, because there's no way we can pay it out of this budget, is that correct?
That's correct. So when we get to the capital budget report, I actually itemize it on there, and at this point, we'd be looking to borrow the money. However, I do believe, as we did with the Spring Street school roof a couple of years ago, with the, with the Spring Street school, is that we borrowed the money the first year, and within two years, we were able to pay it off, and I think we're going to be able to do the same. But you're right, in the short term, we're going to have to do it as a borrowing article.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions about this document? Okay, then what I'll, I'll call your attention to this, what I call in one, a one-liner, I have compressed all of the budgets into one lines. I show you what the increases are year over year, what they are in dollar amounts and in percentage amounts. And then you will see in the right-hand column, you will see TA recommendation. I've gone through every single budget line by line. I have issued the memos over to the department heads as well to inform them as to recommended cuts. And basically, I am going to recommend that we reduce the amount of budgets that were presented to the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee by $146,599. Again, that will give you a balanced budget at the 2% raise I just spoke of a moment ago. On the next page, excuse me, no, go ahead. On the next page, again, I give you another one-liner. This will tell you the specific lines from each budget that I reduced the budget requests from, with also a little bit of an explanation as to why. Again, the department heads have already been contacted, including the school department, and are aware. One item of note is that because the water department is on an enterprise fund and it's not on the tax side, is that I don't make any, I don't make any recommendations on that. That's really the finance committee in, in town meeting to decide.
I know you spent a considerable amount of time in the Board of Selectmen, and we had all the necessary hearings, we had them before us here. And a lot of time has been put up, but I know Denise is just coming in on this, and I don't know if she has any questions on this, but, but generally, what we do, we move it, we move it forward. We're also at a time restraint here too there, because this budget is going to go to the Finance Committee, and it's going to go to the printer. And we think June is, you know, June is not too far away, and this is another, this is another thing we, we have. It's kind of tough for a new selectman coming in to understand all this, but it's an awful lot of work. I know Denise, you attended many of your CAD Finance Committee meetings and, and the Board of Selectmen's meeting to try to pick up, you know, whatever you can, you know. But like I said, I don't know if you have any, any questions about this or where we're going with this, but right at this time, this is the proposed budget, and, and I'm ready to, to move it forward.
What I would like to do is abstain from the vote. I just received the entire Finance Committee handbook last night, I'm sorry, all of the budgets. So I, I would like, without going on record, rather than go on record saying that I recommend it, I would prefer to abstain, review the budgets, and then, and then bring up any questions I might have at town meeting.
The only thing is, I would prefer that you, this is a board, see, we're not working as individuals. And what I would like to see is, if it's possible, if you have any questions about the budget, it should be discussed with the board. And now, I know that Dave sat down with you for a good length of time last night, okay? But, you know, and explained as much, much as he can. But if it, it takes extra time for the, for the board to come in to answer the questions, because I know that when you open to the town meeting, you open, you know how we go through there? Hold, hold, hold.
Right.
If we have all these holes from the, from the town meeting, I don't know when, when are you going to get through?
Well, I, I don't foresee me holding every budget.
No, no, I'm not saying you're going to hold every budget, but the only thing is, for, for continuity, it, it, usually we, we come to some kind of an agreement. And I'm not telling you what, how to vote, because you're going to rate the vote the way you want to vote, okay? Or if you want to abstain, that's fine, you know? But I'm just telling you that, because this is a board, and, and the board works, we try to work together as much as we can.
Right, this is an, an opportunity for me to work against you, rather it's saying, I'm voting on something that I'm not informed on. And for me to say I recommend a budget without being fully informed and having an opportunity to review them, I think is misleading. I don't think an abs, me abstaining in any way affects moving forward with the budgets, it just goes on record that I abstain.
All right, what if we do this? What if we pass it along, and then two meetings from now, we'll put the budget back on the agenda and have a discussion on what we, just a discussion on if we think that everything's good, or if we think that we do want to make changes at town meeting? Just so we're all on the same page, we can put it on the agenda.
As long as we work together, but I'd like to get some, if there's any kind of questions that we can answer them or something like that, that you can have, you know, the answers that you're looking for.
I expect I'll be able to go through it this weekend.
Yeah.
So if, I don't know if there's any opportunity for us to schedule an open meeting for next week impromptu, and discuss it then.
David, when's the next Finance Committee meeting?
They meet on Monday, the 23rd. We would normally meet on Wednesday nights, but we can't do that because we're going to be at OCPC. However, that doesn't mean that on May 4th meeting, if this is what the board is looking to do, then at that May 4th meeting, we could put the budget back on there, and that way as a board, you can rediscover it.
So Monday, the 23rd is next, this coming Monday. So would they be able to vote before we submitted them our actual recommendation?
Sure, I mean, what I would suggest is, is that you would pass along the budget as however the board wants to pass it along now. I think what I'm hearing is that to allow selectmen Raze or selectwoman Raze to be able to analyze the budget between now and, say, May 4th, and then on May 4th, if she has any concerns about the budget that you had present, presented along, that she could then bring them to the board, and as a board, then you could then, to have that discussion. And that doesn't mean that we can't then make an additional recommendation to the Finance Committee at that point. I will say they have already passed their budget, but it is your budget with their recommendation that goes to town meeting. I guess, only because we haven't done this before, so I'm thinking about it as I'm going in my head, is that, I guess what I'm thinking is, is that because we'll have to be going to the printers in early May, and on May 4th, they won't give us enough time, but if we know that the board now has a difference of opinion, then we would be prepared that on June 4th, the town meeting, we could then have motions ready if you're going to make any recommendations and modifications to a budget.
What if we do it on Monday with the Finance Committee, or just before the Finance Committee? And that way, you're already here, everyone's already here except us, but we'll come in and discuss it and make a vote just before they start to go through it.
Sure, I'm here.
Do we have to do a public notice of any?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, we have enough time?
Yep.
How much time do you think that we should post before? The meeting starts at 6:30, so how much time would you like to have for a meeting prior to that meeting?
I can't see more, needing more than a half hour.
Think that would be sufficient?
All right, so.
I'll agree with that.
So we'll post for 6 o'clock on Monday, the 23rd.
Okay.
So at this point, probably no need to actually take a vote on this budget in case there's any modifications to it at that time.
We'll wait to, if it has to be modified, then we can modify it then to take the vote then?
Exactly.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay, moving on. Appointment of Chief Ken May as the Records Access Officer for the Fire Department.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Communication and reports from boards, commissions, and town officials. We have in here, there is a rabies clinic on May 5th, 2018. Dogs are from 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM, and cats from 10:00 AM to 11:00 AM. There is a $10 fee per animal. Okay, public comment period. Does anyone have...
You want to vote on that, or?
Uh...
Yeah, well, just an FYI.
FYI, okay, thank you.
Okay, public comment period. I'd just like to say we had a great election on Saturday, highest, highest turnout in a few years at least. I'm glad that Neil Conley's still coming. He's here with us tonight. And congratulations, Denise. Anyone else? Do you two have anything?
Well, I was just saying, I think the election, you know, a lot of the people showed up, there's a lot of interest in the election and everything else, and all the people worked, and he did a great job. And congratulations you again.
Thank you.
Anything for public comment period, Denise?
No, I usually do it from the public.
Anyone else out there?
The lawsuits pending against the town, are we gonna be briefed on them? Because I don't want to go to town meeting, get up there and ask the question. I know there's three out there, maybe four. I mean, one with somebody on the assessment of the House, Rick Kruger, and the police, I don't know if there's any more, but this was my thing, money, transparency. And then I heard one with the last meeting about the landfill, they wanted $40,000. This is stuff I think that we should know as residents, to see where it's going. Like with the Rick Kruger thing, like I said, his accomplice farms, he won the case and it was appealed. It's costing a lot of money. There's no dialogue in here talking about it, whether it don't go here, it just stays in Dave's lap. But I think it's public information, and we should know exactly what's going on, because it's costing us a lot of money on Rick Kruger. And I don't know about the other lawsuits.
Okay, so we're still in negotiations with Mr. Kruger. A lot of that does take place in an executive session, because it is a negotiation related. David, do you want to speak to a couple of those now, quickly if you want?
I apologize, they've cut you off. But if it was, uh, in negotiations, it was in this collective bargain agreement. And see, this is how he has his piece, you have your piece, and what I hear out there. And if it was in negotiations in this collective bargain agreement, it should have been agreed to and paid, but you challenged it before you signed the CBA, which I know well how to do them. You sign off on it, and you agree to it. You don't go to court unless you have a discrepancy.
Yeah, sure.
His contract wasn't part of the CBA because he wasn't in the union, and it was more of a labor dispute, from what I read. And it's, I believe, they're in discussions on settling it. I don't think I can say anymore. I would think one of the hard parts about litigation and just speaking out loud is the fact that when you're, you're in negotiations, if you tell everyone what you're doing, either side, then it, it gets to the other side, and it leverages one side or the other, and puts the other at a disadvantage. So I don't think it should be secret from the town, Neil. I agree with you 100%. We should know the dollar amount exposed out there, the potential dollar amount. And I don't know if there's a way of doing that without just, without hurting our strategy and protecting whatever leverage we have.
Sure. So let me just speak for 10 seconds on Mr. Kruger, and then I'm gonna make a recommendation. The town has an obligation to pay its people what it believes is the right amount to pay it. That's what we did. It was Treasurer John Duggan, Ann McNair, our, our town accountant, Dave Gagnon, town administrator, in consultation with legal counsel. All of us came to the same conclusion, independent of each other, as to what the right amount was, and paid Mr. Kruger at that time what we believed the correct amount was. It was Mr. Kruger who sued the town. We did not sue him. We then had to defend ourselves. And unfortunately, what has happened in the past is that other employees on their way out the door has threatened lawsuits. We then say, okay, well, instead of paying somebody $10,000, or instead of paying $15,000 in lawsuits, they're looking for $10,000, we'll cut them a check for $10,000. We won't have to worry about spending $15,000 in legal fees. And you know what happens? Everybody looks for a check for 10 grand, because we don't want to spend the legal fees. In this case here, the decision was made not just between the Board of Selectmen, but also the Water Commissioners to collectively agreed that we should defend the town of West Bridgewater. In the meantime, obviously, money has been expended, and there is ongoing negotiations as part of that at this point. So that, I think that's the most I can provide on Mr. Kruger. But what I could do is that I could put together a list of all the open cases at this point, and just put them at the next meeting. We'll put it on the agenda, I'll have a list. It won't be as easy as being able to say exactly what all our risk and exposure is, because some of those cases are appellate export cases, and that is private information that even we're not privy to. But I can at least put the person's name down and address, I suppose. But I can get whatever legal information I can get from the assessors. We have a couple of cases on, on the town side. Like you said, a former police officer who's now on his fifth appeal, but, you know, he has the right to appeal. But I could put all that together. I have no problem with that.
Yeah, you could do that for next meeting.
I think that's a good question, Neil, yes, because the fact, even some of the things that probably even coming out of the assessor's office, that I'm not even aware of, you know what I mean? That, you know, as a Board of Selectmen, I should know, you know, that, who, who's, as long as it don't jeopardize the case, I mean, you know, I mean, like I said, I don't know. And maybe that's something we should talk to the, to our attorney about, too, what, you know, what can we expose and what we can't expose. I mean, because, you know, he, he has to work the case as far as, you know? And I just don't want to get into the delammer over there, but I, I believe that we should know.
Yep, but I have, I can do that.
Okay.
Thank you, David. Town Administrators' Report.
Yep, so before you, number one is really an FYI. Every single year, the disabled veterans from the town of Bridgewater, they, they hold annual fundraising events in their local towns, in the Bridgewater specifically, and they're gonna be in town of West Bridgewater on the 21st and 22nd. There's really not a vote of the board required, but they always like to make sure that you're aware. They normally are at Market Basket, but it will be up to the private organizations to allow them entrance. Before you also is, according to the policy, I've already signed off on a handful of, of public use roads for fundraisers, one in reference to the Boy Scouts and the other one in reference to graduation. Next one is discussion on results of marijuana, marijuana. This is for retail marijuana, not to be confused with medical marijuana. You see what the numbers are in front of you. Question one had to do with whether we allowed access, I mean, allowed retail. 62% of the people in town believe we should not allow retail in the town. Question two, where should we allow cultivation of marijuana for retail use? 58% of the people thought that we shouldn't allow it. And question three was, should we zone for it, or should we allow it by right? If you allow it by right, they can go anywhere that they would like to. If you zone for it, we were proposing at one time that we would zone it exactly the way we did for medical marijuana, and 77% of the people suggested that we do zone for it. So with that in mind, Selectman Marara and I will be at a meeting next Wednesday with a commissioner from the Cannabis Control Commission. And so I will be at that meeting, we will get some feedback. There seems to be some ambiguous, it's ambiguous as to what our next steps would be, but you have the authority as a town to ban it if you would like, to zone it if you would like, or just to allow it to conduct business as you would any other business. I want to try to give you as much guidance on May 4th as I possibly can, because on May 4th, you're going to be voting on warrant articles. And the purpose of this here was to provide guidance to you as a board as to how we should structure those warrant articles if we're gonna bring warrant articles to the town meeting on June 4th.
I know it wasn't binding at the same, but they, they clearly voted, you know, not to have it. I mean, and I, and I honor, you know, the people's vote out there, and why would we want to zone something there if the people just don't want it?
Yeah.
I mean, that's, but like I said, we're gonna hear more about it and, and what we could do until I hear the whole thing out, like, we do everything here, and, and then the board will take an official vote on, you know? And it's gonna come up at the town meeting again, too, right? As a, as a...
Well, that's what I'm looking for clarification, because that's one of the tricky parts. This town of West Bridgewater is one of the towns that voted no on retail marijuana in November of 2016. So I have been led to believe from a credible source that the newest regulation out of the Cannabis Coalition, Cannabis Control Commission, I got that wrong, is that the Board of Selectmen, if they were in a town that voted no, has the authority to just simply take the vote to ban it. I don't know if that's accurate. And quite frankly, I've always been a believer in this issue, that we should go to town meeting and let town meeting take that vote. However, they've already spoken, and they've spoken twice in town now, where two times they've already voted no. So I could easily see why the board may just want to take a separate vote by itself. And then at town meeting, you would just have zoning, because you can't zone by yourself, that requires town meeting. So it's gonna be a little bit tricky, and only you guys can, you're gonna have to make that, that decision at your next meeting.
Yeah, I'd still like to bring it to town meeting, but we'll see what you learn from...
The only thing is, let's face it, it's a money issue, and people are coming up to me and they say, hey, if you don't come here, they're gonna get it anyhow, in somewhere, and you guys are gonna lose out as far as that goes. And that's another, another thing that, that we face. But, you know, we want to do the right thing for the town. I mean, you know, money's great to have and all that, but, you know, I don't want it, not at the expense of my town, you know? That's, that's how I feel, you know?
No, you're, you're...
I agree with you, Eldon.
Huh?
I, I agree with you, although I was in favor of the first two questions. I think the town spoke, but at the same time, I agree.
Yeah, right.
Put it back to the town again.
Yeah, back and see what they do, and we can take a vote.
Because it's a big decision for, both socially and economically.
Yeah, so we're digging into it and, you know, see what we get, and it will come out.
Okay, capital budget recommendations.
And then capital budget, this here is an FYI. I'm not asking you to vote on anything this evening. All it is, is to inform the board as to what happened at capital budget, of which Mr. Chairman, Chairman Kinnahan was a member of. Basically, we had before us $466,000 worth of requests. The Capital Budget Committee approved $231,000 of requests to come from free cash, meaning that we would pay cash for it. And they approved one article for borrowing at $77,000. The borrowing article would be for, for the roof at the library. Apparently, there it's leaking, and so it is something that we do have to do one way or the other. So at this point, what capital budget has recommended is that we purchase a couple of vehicles out of the Police Department, we provide new protective clothing for the Fire Department, a couple of items also for the DPW Department, including overhead doors, and as I said, a borrowing article for the roof over at the library. In addition to that, there are three additional capital budget articles that were not before Capital Budget Committee. One was for sidewalks. That was for $100,000. That is because the Board of Selectmen took that vote earlier in the year, that you wanted to pigeonhole $100,000 for sidewalks in town. The second is, is that in conjunction with the School Committee, the Board of Selectmen had already previously voted to earmark $75,000 for a new roof at the Howard School Gymnasium, because we're seeking matching funds from the state through its MSBA program. And the last is, is that we do have to find, we had, went out to bid, and now we have bids in of around $450,000 to install lights at East Street, East Center Street lights. Those did not go before the Capital Budget Committee, because that budget, that committee is there to advise the Board of Selectmen. Once the Board of Selectmen has already made a decision, you don't need more advice. So, so that's why they weren't before the capital budget. Based on the way I've structured it, is that the sidewalks and the roof at the Howard School would both be cash, out of free cash, and as I said earlier, when Selectman Marara mentioned it, is that if we're gonna go forward on the lights at East Street, East Center Street, we would have to do it as a borrowing article. My hope, though, is, is that within the next two fiscal years, we could pay it off.
Yeah, I'd like to see that be done, because that's, that's one of those things, those lights, you know, I'd like to get them done, you know, like that. When you're figuring out that capital budget now, what is that percentage we, we take out of everybody there that comes in, the lady comes in with a list of stuff? Is that taken into consideration on the, as a capital budget, too? I mean, we spend a lot of money on...
Okay, so yes, I think you're referring to CPC?
CPC, yeah, that's what I, I was just wondering. Wouldn't something like that really, I think something like that should go through a capital budget a little bit, too? Because it's probably things that definitely could be, I'm not saying, because they, you know, they just come in with a list. But really, does the town have any control of that, upon a total, other than they come into the list and they request them, and we vote?
Well, that committee is actually the committee that makes the recommendations, right? Don't, people come to them.
Yeah, exactly. Right, so that people go to CPC, but, but let me, I would draw the following comparison. The Capital Budget Committee exists to be able to vet the projects and make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen. CPC exists to be able to vet their projects and make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen. Recall, none of these requests have to be placed on a warrant. Your next meeting on May 4th, you could just choose not to place any of them on the warrant, to some of them or all of them. You have the ultimate decision-making authority at that point. So you're just looking to them for guidance as to what is it they're suggesting that we place on the warrant.
Well, I think we should look at them at least, you know, and, and see because, you know, what, what they're doing with, with the money, you know, because, you know, hey, listen, it's, it's still town, town funds, you know?
CPC, are you referring to the Community Preservation?
Preservation Act, yeah, that's what I was saying, if, you know, because I know that they come in with a list, and we just, well, let's dampen it and things like that, you know? And maybe we do have, you know, areas that we'd like to see that thing spent in, you know what I mean? And, you know, and wouldn't have to, try to help us out in our budget, too, you know what I mean? I mean...
Yeah, none of these capital budget items, though, could be utilized through CPC funds.
Okay. Thank you.
Would nothing else before the board? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.